Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Hubert's Zone Board of Appeals for the hearing day of June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty three. It's now seven P M. We're going to conduct our meeting. My name is Rob Chanetti. I have a pleasure of serving as the chairman of the C D A at the moment. I'll just introduce our board. We have one absent member, Slin Scow, where we will establish a forum, go through our very short agenda and get right into other hearings and follow basically the same course that is on our agenda. So with that, I'm going to begin by calling the vote. We'll just ask the C D A to kind of respond with either here or I will establish who's here and who's not. And get on with our mission this evening. So calling the Hubert's Zone Board of Appeals, vote call for June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty three, Mr. Delaw, here, Mr. Swanton. Ben, can you hear us online? Ken. Well, we can see it. He's given us visual evidence that he's here. Well, I can give it's.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah. I will, unless it's, unless it's A I, I'm going to say that looks like Ken. Mr. Chan, here. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Yes, here. The scout is absent and this Patricia Peck.
Yes.
And Rob Chanetti, I am present. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six present by the that establishes a quorum. The five voting members this evening will be myself, Mr. Delaw, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon, and Miss Peck. Oh, wait a minute. That's six voting members. Yeah. Is there anything else to recuse yourself?
Yeah, the first matter, the request to continue.
Correct. So the five voting members on, on the matter of one ninety three High Street will be myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon, Mr. Bennet, and Miss Peck. And on eighteen Rossin Avenue, that matter, the voting members will be myself, Mr. Delaw, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Shannon, and Mr. Bennet. So having established our quorum, that's our basis to continue and do business this evening. We have our five voting members for the record. We get into our public hearings. The first matter in our public hearing will be Havering Real Estate LLC Care, at least me, me, Tower of Costa LLC.
Hello, sorry, sorry to interrupt. I had my computer set up incorrectly, so I can hear you now. Thank you.
You established a really good A I, and they were actually present, so it looks, we have already, we've already, we've already included a roll call, but thank you. Hear us. So we just started the public hearings. And we are just opening now with the continuation from April twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three, one ninety three High Street. This is a continuation of an appeal from twenty nineteen zero four two, an appeal of notice violation from the zoning enforcement officer dated May sixth, two thousand and nineteen, turning meeting.
Thank you. As the board knows, we've requested another continuance on this for two reasons. One, the writing of this, the appeal period hadn't passed on the underlying decision that you recently rendered. We have filed that appeal today, so that matter remains unresolved. In addition, the court has ordered a contempt trial on August third, and therefore the matter would continue to be unresolved until then. And so we are seeking a continuation till your July twenty fifth meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Trudy. Members of the C D A, we have the applicant's counsel's request to continue or continue this matter. The reasons just articulated to the hearing date of
July twenty third.
Thank you, July twenty fifth. Do we have a motion and a second?
I will move that the, the appeal of twenty nineteen dash zero four two, one ninety three High Street, the matter be continued to our July twenty five, two thousand and twenty three.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Do we have a second? A second, Mr. Shannon. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. The motion is made by Mr. Bennet and seconded by Mr. Shannon, calling the roll. Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Miss Peck?
Yes.
Rob Chanetti, yes, that's fine. The affirmative, the eyes have it. Motion carries. The matter is continued to seven twenty five, two thousand and twenty three. Thank you, Trudy. And I just note for the members of the C D A, we have added an emergency executive session meeting to connect with developments related to this matter, which we now have on our agenda. The lack of notice of that emergency executive session is more not of anything other than just the circumstance and happenstance of the ongoing hearings and pending decisions by the land court as relayed to us by our city solicitor. And I will share that with tale during our executive session. But we have, as soon as having to duly notify that there's a timing urgency. We have, I, as chair, made the, made the decision to create an executive emergency executive session meeting for this hearing so as to make sure that we have the opportunity to discuss it and make any decisions that may or may not be able to be made within timelines. A lot more to come during the executive session, but that's just for the record. Moving on now to the next matter, the only other matter on our agenda. This is Wujiki Holdings LLC. Care at least me, be Tower of Costa LLC, the address eighteen Rossin Avenue. This is an application for the special permit for nonconformities, docket fifteen of two thousand and twenty three. The applicant seeks all necessary permits, permissions, and, and approvals for an upward extension of an existing primary and secondary front yard and rear yard setback which is for nonconformities. So with that, Trudy.
Thank you very much. For the record, Lisa need me telling the cost of thirty Green Street, your report on behalf of Wujiki Holdings LLC. Mark Wujiki, the manager, and with me this evening is Scott Brown and my colleague Ben Taylor. As the chair indicated, the property is at eighteen Rossin Avenue. It's in the R twos, Southern District. Mark, the manager with Wujiki Holdings, and is in the process of running, renovating and adding on to this home. The applicant seeks a special permit for nonconformities for what we'll show you in a moment. The rear and the two front yard setbacks and upward extension of the existing structure, one and a half feet. The property was, the house was constructed in nineteen forty eight and has also received historic commission approval for the roof line change. It has existing nonconformities for primary front yard setback of twenty three point eight feet, where twenty five feet is required. Secondary front yard setback of nineteen feet, where twenty five feet is required. And a rear yard setback of five, fifteen point seven feet, where twenty five feet is required. The lot area is also undersized for the district at six thousand five hundred nineteen, where ten thousand is required. If you could go to the next slide, please. So the applicant was in the middle of constructing a buy right, one story addition on the home and renovating the entire interior of the home when the builder uncovered inadequate roof and second floor framing members, which needed to be upgraded. The applicant was aware of these conditions prior to commencing construction. And these inadequate ceiling and head heights were considered to be workable until they discovered that the roof framing and the second floor framing, which Scott can address a little bit later, would need to be upgraded and therefore as a result of that reduced the head height, which they thought was going to be workable, workable in some critical areas. Therefore, the applicant is proposing to alter the plans to remove and rebuild the roof in its entirety along with the gable and walls. The resulting proposal will increase the roof height by one and a half feet. That's basically it. But will maintain more or less the same roof pitch and roof configuration. And we're going to show you that in a minute. Next slide, please. So here's the house on the corner of Tilton and Rossin Ave. The primary front yard is Tilton, secondary front yard is Rossin. Both of those are just under the twenty five feet. And then the rear yard is opposite Tilton at fifteen point seven. The foundation of this structure is not changing as far as those nonconformities are concerned. They're going up. The extension is upward motion of one and a half feet. That's it. The addition on the rear is by, on the side, excuse me, is by right. And so that was what had been permitted previously. So that will turn over to Scott to go over the architecture.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. So as Lisa already stated, this is a project that has a currently has a building permit for it. It's been under construction in various degrees since late March. And if you were to drive by it today, you would see our proposed, well, you know, single story addition off the back completely framed up, as well as the garage in the back right corner. Couple of things I wanted to note on this site plan. When we were at the historic commission here, there wasn't a butter who was asking questions about setbacks. And what they were seeing at that point in time was, was simply a foundation that was in place. So I did have to sort of explain to them how this is a corner lot, and as Lisa already stated, the setbacks are a little, a little different here because the established front yard is on Tilton. So as we're facing the house from Tilton, the left side, as you face from Tilton, is subject to the ten foot side yard setback. So what that butter was actually saying was, was a foundation for bulkhead, which, you know, is allowed to be in, in the setback. And the thing that I also realized after that hearing, when I went back and looked at the site plan, and this is a little sort of deceptive, is that a little deceiving to the eye in terms of what we're doing there and how close we are to the property lines. And what I noticed is that the, the paved driveway for the abutting property on Tilton actually encroaches on this property by a couple of feet. That said, you know, we're planning, you know, we're planning to put a privacy fence on that section of the property, and that's clearly indicated here. Next slide, please. So, you know, back in, I guess it was late March, when this was fully, fully gutted, you know, we were caught by a couple of things caught us by surprise. One, the poor condition of the framing. You know, this is a, which is a bit of a surprise because, you know, this is sort of a post-war house and I would have expected it to be in better condition than it actually is. And, you know, second floor framing wasn't framed up at all like I thought it was going to be. And that presented a real problem, which meant that we needed to entirely reframe that floor and you know, framing in today's standards with the kind of spans that we're looking at, that was going to require a lot more dimension, four inches back. The other thing that we noticed was the condition of the roof rafters. There, there are two by six roof rafters at twenty inches on the center, completely inadequate from a structural standpoint here in two thousand and twenty three. So not only we're dealing with that, but also we're dealing with a new energy code that's out this year. So you can't actually meet the R value of six inches of, you know, six inches of depth. So for that, you know, those two reasons, we really need to reframe the roof. So recognizing that we were losing four inches in the floor and perhaps four to five inches above. You know, what was, what I was thinking was a five foot nine head height at those exterior wall walls on the second floor actually was more like, going to be like five foot one. So that was sort of the tipping point, which really made us look in the mirror and ask ourselves, well, what are we doing here? And let's just, you know, try to reframe the roof. And so that's the proposal for you tonight. And so essentially, we're keeping the same roof configuration that's there now, raising it just eighteen inches. And on these next slides, you know, we have the existing elevations on the top, proposed elevations on the bottom. So in addition to raising this roof, you can also see that we're, we're giving it kind of a, a new nicer front entrance. We're changing the window configurations. We're introducing sort of six over one windows and just giving a sort of a nicer, a nicer look from a property of standpoint. Next slide, please. So the right side elevation, you know, and this is also the side where that single car garage is going to be. And you can kind of see, you know, comparing the elevation on the top, the elevation on the bottom. Again, we're keeping the roof pitch the same and simply raising it. Now, lower right hand corner, that's the single story addition that you'll see if you were to drive by it, which is currently framed out. Yeah. Next slide, please. So this is the rear elevation, you know, this is in the foreground on the bottom slide. That's our single story addition with the main mass of the house beyond. After the lower right hand corner, that's a sunroom which faces Tilton. You can see that same sunroom on the top right, you know, changing, you know, reworking windows on that. That's that bulkhead that I spoke about on the bottom there. Next slide, please. This is elevations from Tilton. We are adding a little bit of a deck on the side. You know, some stairs to kind of get down to the, the yard. Again, there's the sunroom, single story addition that you can see framed up in, in a few slides, the whole left hand corner. Next slide, please. And I, I put this in here just to sort of compare, you know, kind of what we are comparison of what we've been permitted for, what we were planning to do in March is actually shown on the bottom. And on the top is the proposal for you today, you know, again, simply you know, eighteen inches. Not a whole heck of a lot of difference between those two. Next slide, please. Just some sheets that we had included for the historic commission presentations, what the house looked like, you know, last October. Completely covered in vinyl siding, you know, not in great shape. Next slide, please. Just some context photos in the neighborhood. Upper left hand corner, this is sixteen Rossin, immediately to the right. This is the same developer, you know, completely renovated. You know, a couple of years ago, this is also a post-war house, kind of the same, you know, same age as the one before you tonight. We did not encounter some of the, some of the issues that we're encountering on eighteen Rossin, which is interesting. So neighborhood is a bit of a mismatch of post-war homes. Lower left hand corner, that's directly across the street on Highland. That's a completely renovated home that used to be a ranch. The photo directly above the Matthew there, that's the abutting property on Tilton, you know, so that one, one beyond are both capes with the dormer on it, much like what we're doing here as well. And with that, we're going back over to Trudy. Thank you.
You go to the next slide. Thank you. So as the board knows, the criteria for a special permit for nonconformities for a single or two family is first, whether or not there will be any new nonconformities. And as we've shown you, there's no new nonconformities in this instance. The next is whether or not the proposed change will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming structure. Here, I think that we've shown that the board can find that the proposed change of one and a half foot of an upward extension will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. From a dimensional perspective, no existing nonconformities are being intensified. The footprint isn't changing as far as where the upward extension is going to go. And while being extended upward, it's actually, you know, these, these setbacks of twenty three, eight, nineteen and fifteen, seven are changing at all and are frankly further away from the property line than if they were more nonconforming, obviously. These setbacks are much closer to the twenty five foot rather than, you know, less than the twenty five feet. The proposed upward extension will have little to no impact on adjacent properties, given that distance between the structure and the property lines. The actual upward extension, one and a half feet is, ends up having the house be from twenty point twenty five feet to twenty one point seventy five feet, where the minimal, excuse me, where the allowed height would be thirty five, of course. And we're not anywhere close to that. And as Scott showed in the earlier plans, the neighborhood has a mix of heights within it and certainly right around it. Visually, the roof pitch and the roof configuration is very close to that of the existing structure. And finally, it's certainly not out of context of the neighborhood. There is a variety of different homes and structures and architectural styles in the neighborhood. And this, frankly, we think is improving the existing structure as compared to the rest of the neighborhood is actually, there's a lot of changes that have happened, improvements have happened and is appropriate with the rest of improvements that have happened along the street. So we don't believe that the change is substantially more detrimental, that is, to a great or significant extent in the neighborhood and would request the board approve the special permit for nonconformities.
Very good. Thank you, Trudy. And thank you, Scott Brown, presentation. So with that, we'll close the presentation portion of the public hearing and go into public comment. On the comment, seeing there are very few people in the room here at the senior center. Anyone wish to be heard? Going once, going twice? Thank you. I will now go online and again, equally, an equally small number of potential comments. We have a few folks who are logged on line. And for those that are following, participants that are online via Zoom, if you wish to hear it, just kindly raise your hand. We will unmute your mic. We'll ask you to give your name and address on the record and share your comments. Seeing no hands, going once, going twice, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing and go with the questions from the board. And I'll just invite the members of the C D A who wishes to offer a question or pose a question. Any questions? Ken, I'll go. Just to reconfirm, the roof change is just on the main house.
On the main house.
So it's that, whatever it is, it's gonna be in twenty three feet, eleven inches to the very peak on the first drive. That's it. That's the only change. That's what you're asking.
That's correct.
No other questions? All right. Thank you, Trudy. Mr. Bennet, I have no questions. I just want, thank you.
Just to sort of clarify on the setbacks and the secondary and primary front lot. So Rossin Hill Avenue is the address, that's where the front door is, but that's slightly shorter in length than the Tilt Street side. So Tilt Street functions as the primary front yard, which is why you can have the ten feet on the side yard.
That's correct.
Oh, thank you.
Very, thank you. Okay, great. And just not to forget, Mr. Swanton, any, any questions?
Nope, no questions.
I can tie this. So unless there's any further, I will close the questions from the board section of our public hearing and we'll go into deliberations. And again, members of the C D A, as we heard, as we all know, this is a special permit for nonconformities. So I have to tailor our deliberations around the criteria for a special permit for nonconformities for a single or two battling, the two-pronged criteria, whether there is any new nonconformity or an exacerbation of existing nonconformity. And two, whether or not post renovation change, whether the impact will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existing conditions. And substantial is further defined as, as to a significant degree, not merely a, a detriment, well, I see detriment, but something significant. On that, it's injected to members of the board. So with that, with deliberations, I'll let anyone who wants to jump in go first and we'll start with this Peck. Anyone want to start off deliberations?
I'm passing. You go.
Sure. I've been passed. I feel like a wide receiver. I can support this application. I, I think it's, again, tastefully done. The change is so minor as to the main house. I doubt any of us will even see it other than fresh new shingles on the roof. The lot coverage is excellent. The open space is good. The roof height is, you know, well opened. The ordinance, I, I can't find any justification not to support it. So I'm behind it a hundred percent. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Shannon, Mr. Bennet.
I, I agree with Shannon. He's ticked off the primary factors properly to support this application. This is a thoughtful modification and of the house. It's not only an improvement to the existing home, I believe it's a neighbor, it's a, for, not only is it that substantially more detrimental. In fact, it's a positive addition to the neighborhood. The request here is nominal. The roof, the roof line itself is maintained some for all those reasons.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Wow.
I would agree with Mr. Bennet. No new nonconformity here, and this is certainly not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I can support this also.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. I agree with my colleagues and can support it as well. Any further comments and deliberations?
Oh, yeah. Hello, I'd like to chime in. I, I agree with my colleagues. I can support this. It's, as Ben said, it's a very minimal increase. So I can support this too.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Sorry about that. Without any further deliberations before we close and go to a vote? I will close the deliberations portion of our public hearing. And with that, we have a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities on eighteen Rossin Avenue. And a second.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to approve special permit for nonconformities for eighteen Rossin Avenue, Z N C twenty three dash fifteen.
Very good. What was your favor, Mr.?
There was a tree and sidewalk, but I'm not sure if I can reach it.
Oh, thank you. I printed the wrong staff report. I saw that. I did see that pop up. And as chair, my apologies, before we formalize our vote, I would note that that the tree and sidewalk conditions is noted that the staff report will be a condition that the accessory structure on the submitted site land shall not be considered a standard dwelling unit nor used as a so-called short-term utility. And useful now.
It's a garage.
It is a garage.
I believe when we had the site plan, we were not sure. We had elevations, so we did not know, you know, the size of it.
Oh, it's very good. Small, okay? It's like, it's like smaller than it's any, most of the, it's teeny tiny.
Yeah, in that context of the time, it's, this issue come out periodically with these accessories.
Right. That was a surprise for us.
The board is with it up.
Yeah, that's, that's, thank you. That's a good point. Though it's written in our staff report, further requirements since it was written, may or may not be, yeah, may or may not be worthy of inclusion anyway. So I'll leave that to Mr. Delaw. If you made a motion, you want to amend your, your motion with any additional?
Yeah, I think we'll, I think the motion should be amended to address the tree and sidewalk issue as noted in the staff report. But I think when you expect to be, the other, the other day, I think we can let that go as I, yeah. So okay, create a motion to include the tree and sidewalk.
Very good. Just to note that for the record, the, yeah, shall place the existing sidewalk with concrete and ceramic curving adjacent to the property on Tilton Street, as shown on the comments submitted by D P S on sixteen, twenty twenty three, and in accordance with the specifications provided by D P S. And of course, that approval was completed prior to occupancy. So that's now part of motion made by Mr. Delaw. We have a second.
I will second this.
Mr. Bennet's gesture is a second. All right, motion's made and seconded, calling roll, Mr. Swanton. Yes, Mr. Bennet. Yes, Mr. Shannon. Yes, Miss Peck. I, I, oh, you are, I'm sorry. You're the, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
I'm trying to be able to, yes, that is, five is the affirmative. The eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Trudy. Thanks, Scott Brown. With that, I will allow to close our public hearings and we will go into our business meeting. All we have before us are approval of the minutes, six, thirteen, twenty, twenty three. Any comments, revisions? Has everyone seen the minutes? If not, do we have a motion to approve the minutes, Senator?
I'll move to approve the minutes as written.
Excellent. Made and seconded by I'll second it. I'll second it, Mr. Shag, very good, voice being seconded in thirty minutes. Um, and this can just be a yay or nay vote, um, verbally, uh, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, any non-votes or extensions? Hearing them, the eyes have it, motion carries, minutes, um, are approved. So with that, um, I don't have any other updates. Um, and uh, other than to update you on our next matter that's on the agenda, which is uh. The rationale by which I believe uh the board should enter um an executive's, an executive session. Meeting and discussion and uh definitely groundwork for this, um, I do note for the record that um. Um, that uh, we will take a phone call and participate in the executive session. I'll note for the record that uh. That Mr. Swallow uh has formally refused himself at the outset. Um, and um, I'll just lay the groundwork if this board agrees uh to go into executive session. We will um, make sure the group is closed, we will launch a new link. And uh, we'll participate on that, uh, because I believe the scout that reached out said she'll be able to log on. Uh, she has the link, she's standing by. Um, and since Mr. Swallow would be recusing himself, there there he would, he would be invited to to leave. He would be invited to park. Look, the record shows that he's left. Yeah, and we'll, we'll also shut the door, um, which is uh a way to sort of quarantine. Uh, the roof. So with that, um. Let me just note what's happening and what's happened with respect to this matter of why the executive session. Um, Andy Portman had a conference call with the city solicitor.
Uh, wait, wait, wait a sec, point of order, I'm sorry, I I thought we were supposed to shut down the public, um.
Well, first, we I, we we haven't gone into executive session yet, I first didn't lay the groundwork and.
Okay, all right, all right, get it, I got it, sorry.
So without going into any of the the subject matter, Ken, this is a fair question. Um, the the procedural rules are first that I establish why we, why I feel we should, and if it's met with the. You know, majority sent of you as my colleagues, then we do, if it isn't, then we don't. Um, and only if we do, do we then quarantine improvement. And um, and sort of sequester ourselves for that hearing. So um, we had a conversation um. With city solicitor with respect to the matter which I think is, you know, is certainly public enough. Whereby this, uh, the application of one and three High Street uh has been, was remanded back to us as board took action on it at our last hearing. Um, the board um on remand from Landport um. Uh, attempted to and voted to uh include additional conditions. Which was not explicitly uh permitted or forbid uh by the Land Court's order. Um, and it was the, I believe, the collective, the board certainly, the collective committee chair, that it was uh. Within our purview authority to uh, to undertaking reasonable or balanced uh conditions. That matter of the applicant disagreement that conclusion after the hearing, after our vote, uh, and. Uh, brought that matter back to the Land Court uh on a new application for um, for contempt. Um, alleging that the board had um, had exceeded its authority uh and violated the court's order, we um. This is a matter that's now back before us with some urgency, the court um had a hearing just on Monday. Uh, that matter was only just brought to my attention, Monday was yesterday, that means that, and and the court is inclined to act as early as. Uh, the end of the week, uh, and so it is of some timing and urgency for this board to. Um, to further uh review our original decision and the underlying basis by which we. Uh, we endeavor to add conditions uh to determine whether we wish to stand behind those or take some other position. Uh, is what hangs the balance is whether or not the court is left with the obligation on the applicant's. Um, application for attempt to take some further action, uh, which would involve the city. The city solicitors representing the uh city, right, and or our board in this, at least for the moment. Uh, and obviously that is at additional cost, so there are a number of factors that are worthy of our further review, and for that reason, I've asked. Our planning director and uh our city planner to place. A an emergency based on the timing, in my sense of it, um, the urgency of the timing and emergency executive setting. On our agenda for your consideration, and I ask that you um kindly um consider. Uh, joining me in this uh effort to executive sessions. With that, um, I uh, I will um. Uh, if um board, I guess we will just simply take a roll call and a vote to see who. Um, supports or rejects the the um motion going to executive session. Go, go ahead.
One question, don't we also have to have as part of this motion that we're voting on that? We will not be returning to regular session after the executive session?
Only if we hold affirmative to go into executive session, now the instructions uh to anyone who's logged on. With respect to what happens next, if we, you know, we don't go in and be adjourned, we do go in, I make it clear to the members of the public, I'm. I guess I'm doing it right now, that we won't be returning back to a public, uh, a public hearing, but again, we were back. Anyone wish to be heard, um, and or if not, uh, does someone wish to make a motion to go into executive session? Which would have to be second.
I'll move that the uh, I want to move to executive session.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Bennet, and and I don't want to short circuit, did any member wish to be heard before we take motion? Okay, um, Mr. Swan, did you, did you wish to be heard further on?
Nope.
Very good, uh, the motion uh to go into executive session uh is made by Mr. Bennet, is we have a second.
I'll second it.
Swan's motion is made and seconded by Mr. Swan, um. Calling the role on the uh motion to go into an emergency executive session. Um, pursuant to Master of Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one. Um, to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation. Uh, in the matter of Hembling Real Estate LLC versus the City of the Mid-Port Southern Board of Appeals. Calling the role, Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Rob, Chen, Penny, I vote yes, um, that is one, two, three, four, five, the affirmative, the eyes have it. The motion carries, and so we will now enter executive session, uh, and in doing so, we'll invite um, Mr. Swallow to uh. Mark our company and thank you for your service. Um, we'll seal the room and all I do remember is the public that are logged on. This is a uh, an executive procedural session during which, um, pending litigation matter we discuss. Uh, with respect to strategy, uh, only there are no substantive divisions or votes that will be taken. Um, I also will note for the record, um, that the Sony Board of Appeals will not be coming back with this link. For further deliberations, discussions, or business, um, the board will adjourn its proceedings and its meeting. For six twenty-seven twenty-three upon our conclusion of the emergency executive session. Um, and so I thank any members of the public who are logged on for your time, your courtesy and your uh participation. With that, uh, we will now enter executive session and we will use uh, or or members who are logged on using. The secure uh, executive session link, we will um, close the doors to our hearing. Thank you very much, everyone, and uh, good evening.